I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. This is the September 23 meeting of the Clinton School Committee. I would like to start with a motion to approve the bills.
So moved.
It's our second. Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the bills? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of September 9?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion on those minutes? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Mr. Sarmak, do we have a student representative tonight?
We do, we finally do. I have to announce that Sofia Sanchez will be our student representative to the school committee this year. Sofia?
Wonderful. Sofia.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sofia Sanchez, and last week at the Student Council internal elections, I was voted to be the student representative for this academic year. I'm one of the three student council members for the class of 2021. I'm on the first robotics team. I run cross-country. I'm in NHS, and I do AV for the school, just to name a few things. I look forward to meeting with the committee and updating you all on what goes on at Clinton High for the rest of the year. As the students start to get into the swing of the school year, they're slowly but surely getting involved in the activities and events that Clinton High offers. Two weeks ago, we had our elections for the class of 2023 and the election for the out-large position on the student council. Molly Giraud was voted in for president, Amaya Duran for vice president, Ebenele Sanchez for secretary, Vanessa Bernard for treasurer, Julia Rosgnoff for student council, and Rachel Gwynn for the out-large seat. On Tuesday, September 24, students who are part of Step Up to Excellence will be having a summer experience dinner at the manor in West Boylston at 5:00 PM to recount their summer experiences through the program. Thursday, September 26, Mrs. Alicia Casey will be hosting a vaping presentation in the auditorium with all of the classes, where she will warn the kids of the side effects of vaping. September 27, we'll be having our fall sports pep rally to celebrate student athletes in the gymnasium, and we'll be having our first home game, first football game, that same evening. On Friday, October 11, the Clinton High School Student Council will host their last blood drive sponsored by the Red Cross. The Red Cross has decided to stop all mobile blood drives in Central and Western Massachusetts. The drive will run from 7:30 to 12 with appointments every 15 minutes. Donators can email the student council at galesgive@gmail.com. Over the last 10 years, blood drives have been a huge part of the overall fabric of Clinton High School. Six times, the school has achieved a number-one ranking in the state with two second-place finishes. The administration, staff, students, and community members have contributed immensely to the success. The student council is currently exploring options to bring back blood drives to CHS. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia.
Thank you.
Well done. We look forward to working with you. Is there anything from the PTA tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We had our first PTA meeting last Thursday in the CES library. It has been a great start to the school year. We would like to thank all the parents who donated to the staff's breakfast on their first official day back. The table was well-packed for goodies for our teachers. We had a successful booth at Old Home Days, making $1,032.62, which is a little lower than we usually make due to the movie being canceled on Friday night and less foot traffic. We would like to thank the parents and the teachers that volunteered. Staff that was present was Christine Zencraft, Kate Morin, and Richard Quirk. We would also like to send a big thank you to Mr. Z's Pizza for supplying our dough, which they donate to us every year. We have decided as a board to take a year off from the Ghost and Goblins 5K road race. Ed DeValt reached out and asked if First Robotics could run the race this year with the intent of us collaborating next year and in future years. So it would be the PTA and the robotics team combining for that. The parents at the meeting are working on subcommittees to bring dances and bingo back this year. We are also in the process of doing a membership drive. Our numbers are down from previous years. Our next meeting is Thursday, October 10 at 6:30 in the CES library, and our November meeting will be held after school in the Clinton Early Resource Center space, hoping to have staff be able to come directly after school for the meeting. And then if parents can come, they can use the gym to play.
Okay. So the time again on the 10th is what?
6:30.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything from the special needs pack?
Yes. We had our first meeting Tuesday, September 3 in the CES library. We also had a table at Old Home Day that sold keychains, T-shirts, bracelets, and a decorative swag lighting. We made $420, and that will be going to one of our scholarships at graduation in June. So we only need 80 more dollars to make it to a scholarship. And I would like to thank Amy Bishop for manning the table and keeping track of the volunteers, and Laurie Richards from CMS who spent Saturday afternoon helping out. It was greatly appreciated. We have some future craft fairs, and we plan on using monies earned to go towards our scholarship. On Wednesday, October 16, we will be hosting a make and take sign class at the United Church of Clinton on Haskell Ave with a portion of the cost going to CPAC, which will in turn go towards our scholarship. Our goal is to get our scholarship money as fast as we can, and then whatever money we make after that, we're going to use towards getting a speaker in from outside of our district. And then we are in the process of getting a guest speaker to our next meeting internally with more info to come. Our next meeting will be October 1 at 6:30 in the CES library.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions for Kelly? Thank you.
Just one question, like the make and take, where would I find out information or to sign up?
We're going to do a Facebook event, and then we're going to get it out there that way.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anything from the CTA tonight?
Hi.
Good evening.
Hi.
This afternoon, we had staff development on social-emotional learning so that we can better help our students. We can expand on the great things that we already do. We learned that many of the things we do are on that list, but that maybe we can do them in a little different way, or we can add to what we're doing. So I thought it was one of the best professional developments that we've had in a while.
Terrific.
That it felt really pertinent to what we were doing. And on the same vein, we had a union board meeting this afternoon, and we talked about meeting the social and emotional needs of our teachers too this year. So we're working on planning more social events for ourselves in order to meet our needs and to recharge our batteries and to meet our colleagues outside of school.
Great.
And our first winter social, we've planned, not for the senior center, but it's still on the list, but it's planned for December 5. We had hoped to do it a bit earlier and have it a fall social, but when we started looking at the sports schedules and trying to figure out how we could avoid an afternoon game, we decided that the beginning of December, maybe, according to Mr. Zapantis, fit best into when there was kind of a lull in the schedule so that we can get the most amount of people to come out and meet our new teachers.
Great, nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything from the public tonight? All right. So again, thank you all for being here. Your presence here is part of our favorite part of why we do what we do. So Dr. Meyer, let's begin the celebrations.
So we'll start with our Clinton Elementary School Student of the Month, Mr. Rollo wants to come on up, and whoever you're bringing with you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I want to bring up Anastasia Washburn.
Go ahead, Mr. Sarmak.
I'm going to tell you a little bit about Anastasia, and then I'm going to indulge you for a moment if possible. Anastasia will be much more of a better orator than I am going to ever be. So let's see. Anastasia Washburn is a fourth-grade student at the Clinton Elementary School, who not only is academically well-prepared, but she participates in the cheering at the Clinton Under 10 youth team. She went last week, this past week, in order to cheer on her friends, even though she was unable to participate due to an injury, which tells you a little bit about her character. Anastasia will do well at the Clinton Middle School and the Clinton High School. If I could look at my crystal ball, I am sure I would see a girl or student who will take the upper-level courses, who participates in various school sports programs, and who will graduate with honors. But that is not why she is here today. I know with hard work and perseverance, Anastasia is going to succeed. I also know that as a fourth-grade student, she has a skill that many yet have yet to develop, and it will serve her well beyond the walls of the Clinton High School. Remember her name, as you are going to see it as time moves on. I'm honored to present Anastasia Washburn because she has the ability to look introspectively at herself and to determine what characteristics she wants from herself and her friends. The ability to self-analyze and put the thoughts into words and onto paper is uplifting. Anastasia has demonstrated a grown-up self-examination and has written an essay, "I Want a Friend," boom. I ask Anastasia to share the assignment with all of you, and I hope you can take her words and pay it forward. Anastasia?
I want a friend who takes care of my feelings and who loves to laugh.
Can I stop you there, Anastasia? Do you mind coming up to here, and that way we can make sure that we capture it?
I want a friend who takes care of my feelings and who loves to laugh. Someone who plans things advanced of something to look forward to. A friend who knows what's fair and what is unfair. A friend who loves going out for ice cream even when it's cold and never gets tired of me or what I have to say. Someone who's honest and can understand that I had a bad day and needs some time alone. A friend who is never afraid to be funny and knows that they can disagree, and I wouldn't be mad if you're telling the truth. A friend who respects the fact that I might have some other friends that I want to spend time with without making me feel bad about my decision. Someone who always does what's right. A friend who takes responsibility over what's wrong and admits interest to fix it instead of not mentioning it again, thinking I would forget. If you think you can be this friend, know that I care about everything you have to say, even if it seems pointless. Please know that I'm very sensitive and my feelings are hurt easily. Therefore, I will always accept your apologies. It just might take me a while to feel normal again. I have a lot of plans during the weekend weekend, but know that when I'm free, I'd love to spend time with you. I would never make up excuses to stay away from you. I hope we can be friends.
So Dr. Meyer and the school committee has a fantastic certificate for Anastasia, all right? And you get to shake hands and get a picture of Dr. Meyer also. Miss Silvio and I want to thank you and thank for being proud of the CES. And I've made copies that you can get to the school committee, okay? So you can give them that. Come here, you get this. You get this here, and you turn right like this. Look at this. She's going to take your picture. Megan?
Perfect, all right?
All right.
All right, I'm going to give them that.
Congratulations. Thanks for being a great woman.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Great job.
That was awesome, honey.
All right, so next we have our middle school student of the month.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
So the middle school is very honored to have Daniela Ruiz, an eighth-grade student at Clinton Middle School, as our student of the month. Come on up. So each month, we ask teachers to nominate a student that they feel is worthy of being student of the month at Clinton Middle School. So this time, Ms. Morin, along with several other staff members, felt that Daniela was deserving of this, so let me tell you why. Daniela Ruiz moved to Clinton from Honduras less than a year ago. When she enrolled, she was shy and took in her environment very quietly. She has always had amazing classroom and school behavior from the beginning. As last year continued, Daniela stood out as a student who is driven to achieve. She has immersed herself in her learning of all subject matters. What has made Daniela stand out this year is her ability to lead. We've had many, many new students move into the Clinton Middle School this year, and Daniela has graciously accepted helping them transition as they move into the United States, as well as helped them make their way around the school and just be a buddy so that they know that they have somebody to look forward to. She is dependable for everyone. And I have to say that last year, I was in Ms. Morin's class several times, and Daniela always made me feel part of the class. She'd come sit with me when they were working with buddies so that I could learn with them and do the activities. And I just felt like, it was an amazing feeling. So myself, as an adult, felt that way. I can only imagine what the new students feel like, and I'm sure Ms. Morin, being the teacher of someone that is this wonderful. So Daniela is also trying something new this year, and she has also joined the JV soccer team at Clinton High School, a sport that she has not played competitively, but she wanted to be a part of something outside of her academics. Daniela is a kind, caring, and so deserving of this recognition for being all-around amazing young lady and student at the Clinton Middle School. So we thank you, and we're so proud of you, to honor her and to present her to you tonight.
Thank you.
So we'll let you go, she looks good. And I think Ms. Morin has something else.
Let me hold this for you, okay?
Yeah.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Great job. All right, now we have our high school student of the month.
I have with me Ms. Michelle Elliott, a teacher at Clinton High School. At Clinton High School, we ask our teachers to nominate students, and we go through the nominations. And we ask whoever is chosen to have teachers to write something about the student, why they nominated them. I'd like to read this from Ms. Elliott about Sofia. Sofia Sanchez. Come on up. Sofia Sanchez is being recognized this evening as the Clinton High School Student of the Month. Sofia was nominated by Mrs. Elliott. Sofia is without a doubt one of the hardest-working engaged students here at Clinton High School. One of the first things you will notice about Sofia is that she's a true lover of life. Her enthusiasm and joy are infectious, and she lifts all those in her company. Sofia is present before, during, and after most school events, writing lights and sound for presentations in the auditorium. She does not get flustered, though there are many times when things don't go as planned. I would say that Sofia's motto is not, "Oh, no, we have a problem," but instead, "Let's figure out a solution," smiling all the while. Sofia is kind and compassionate to her classmates and teachers alike. She is observant of those who may need an encouraging word or a helping hand that does not need to be asked or provided either. It is clear that Sofia has been raised to value kindness to others over self-congratulations, and it is one of the qualities that make her stand out. I present to you Sofia Sanchez.
Can I share that one little story about Sofia?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry. I thought of a story today, talk about grace under pressure. We were traveling to Spain last year, leaving directly from school, and I decided at the last minute, I'm going to charge my phone up to 100%. When I went to put the cord in, the cord wouldn't go in, and I had charged it that morning. I couldn't figure out why it wouldn't work. So Sofia happened to be in the room. Otherwise, I'm thinking, is there an Apple store at the airport? What can I do? I have all my contact information. You know, traveling is stressful, but when you also have a group of teenagers depending on you, even more so. So Sofia gets her little flashlight.
Something stuck in there.
Well, she goes to Mr. Howard, who tapped it on the desk, and I don't know how this got in there. A little screw fell out, and that was the solution to the problem. But no stress, no panic, Sofia just gets it done. You want this girl on your team.
Thanks for everything you've done, Cory.
Congratulations. All right, so now we have our employee of the month, which is actually, she's not really an employee anymore, but we wondered for her contribution. So Mr. Van Assen is going to come up and talk.
Why not? I only want you to speak for about five seconds, but you deserve more than that, so I'd just like to say a few words. I would like to personally express my gratitude for 21 years of dedication, professionalism, and hard work. You spend long hours reaching out to families in need of assistance and getting the applications necessary for them to receive free or reduced meals. The number of our students receiving free meals has increased 30% due to your hard work. So that goes back 10 years. We were like at 20%, now we're at 50%. These applications benefits the lunch program, Chapter 70 Head Home Program, and most importantly, the families and students in need. So I thank you for that. Nan was also a great multitasker. She also handled payroll, billing, point-of-sale system, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Anything that was asked of her. Nan, you've got such an asset to me, our staff, the school lunch program, and I can't say enough. I thank you for everything that you have done. We appreciate it. You've done so much. I wish you the best, happiness, and everything in your next chapter. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
On behalf of the superintendent and the school committee, I'd like to present a certificate of achievement for you.
I'm going to give her a lunch box.
We still have our party yet.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You know you'll be missed.
And so, ladies and gentlemen, before we let everyone go, I would like to acknowledge one additional celebration. This past week, our superintendent, Dr. Stephen Meyer, was recognized by the Worcester Business Journal as one of the awardees of the 40 Under 40 Awards. It's a tremendous honor, the only superintendent selected. Congratulations, Dr. Meyer. Thank you for representing the town of Clinton and the public for so well. We do not have a lunch box for you.
I have one that I use anyway.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. You are certainly welcome to stay for the rest of our business meeting, but we would not be offended if you chose to not stick around.
We like to say this is a great time to go in the hallway and take pictures, and if you happen to not come in, that's okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Clears up pretty quick.
Oh, you're very kind.
Oh, she's so sweet. How nice. Oh, you're so good to do that.
You should be, yeah. What a tremendous.
She's a little in the house now, so.
Oh, it's so nice.
Try to help her the best I can.
Well, thank you for being here tonight. So I think, since we need the principals, why don't we take the agenda out of order?
Yeah.
And you can just go through your report where it fits.
So if I could take one thing out of order, we have, so we do have an update from our business manager.
Oh.
We're just going to do it maybe under older new business, but since Mark's here, maybe we'll have him come on up and just share his information with you. It was my fault for not getting it on the agenda, but it's not really an action item. It's more just an update, so I think we're okay.
Thanks, Cory.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just give you a quick update. We're continuing the process of closing out FY19 and getting FY20 established and arranged for the new fiscal year. So as you were told by the prior business manager, the original appropriation for FY19 of $22.8 million has $93,000 still encumbered. We're expecting to fully expend that, except for any encumbrances, which may occasionally come in less or more than what it was originally encumbered for. So that number could change a little bit, but pretty much that's where the local budget's going to land. As for grants, we're in the process of closing out the grants. We do have grants that run two years, so we take a look at what we have in the local budget and what we can expend and use in FY20 for salaries. So we're going through that process as we put together the FY20 budget. And then we also had a couple grants that were amended. So there will be grants that will be closed out finally in FY19, and those will do the final grant reports on. And I will give you a detailed update on the grants next month.
Okay.
One of the things we did do is request from Desi, and we received an extension to file the end-of-the-year report, because obviously, you know, coming in new, there's a lot of pieces going on.
Sure.
And we also have the town accountant, who has stepped out, so it's a little less easy to have communication there. So we're working through that. As for the revolving accounts, these are the balances as reported to you. As you can see, there are healthy balances in each of the revolving accounts. The ones, of course, that we concern ourselves with most are Circuit Breaker and School Choice, as they are major revenue sources for the district. The only revolving account that came in negative during FY19 was the school lunch program at $19,000. And there was, at the end of the year, a reclass from the local budget, some expenses out to bring that to zero because we can't run negative balances in the revolving funds. So that's pretty much where we're standing right now for FY19. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for me?
I just add, I know for the school lunch program, I know we've had multiple conversations about that. There are still some of that debt. Obviously, we kind of had to take over that debt from the outstanding balances because we can't close that account with a negative balance. We're still trying to, you know, we still send out letters. We're still tracking a lot of that down. The other thing is, looking at, through some of the staff turnover and different things that have happened in the food service program, we're confident that we should have accounted for that $19,000 so it wouldn't be something that would happen again this year.
Great.
It would be something that would be, there's some savings on insurance and some savings on some of the turnover in staff hiring, people at a lower salary than, you know, than maybe the people who, the predecessors. And so we're, you know, we feel that we're going to be in good shape in that account this year.
Okay.
So for FY20, and it says FY20, but the first item says FY18, so that's a little typo. That should be FY20. During the process of starting the year- I also attached a copy of the, the local budget through September, or through today, I should say, at least, almost all, all the way through September. One thing it does not have at this point is it does not have salaries encumbered. As you folks know, this is kind of a manual process, because the salary module is not part of the accounting software. It's a processing, really a vendor that's done from Worcester Harpers. So that, what happens through the course of the years and prior years, there are encumbrances that are done, which are basically purchase orders. What the prior business manager did would do a purchase order for every month of the year, which would be everybody's salaries, which would account for what people would be paid for the year, so we know where we stand. And then with each payroll that occurs, you have to do a journal entry to actually put the expense in. So I've been talking with Harpers about the possibility, and it is possible. So we're gonna try to work through the process of, rather than doing these journal entries, getting an upload from them. So basically, we can get, basically, a file that we can upload, so that the payroll will be uploaded into the system, into our accounting software, rather than having to sit there and do debit and credit journal entries, which will at least be a small step to automation. I mean, it would be great if, if eventually, the whole process is integrated, but at least it will make things a little quicker and easier to get updated salary information.
And accurate.
And accurate, right, exactly. Because it's, anybody can make a mistake doing a journal entry, but the feed is the feed. So that's where we stand with FY20 right now.
Any other questions for Mark?
Just for my own knowledge, because it's the first time seeing this, am I to assume that the Circuit Breaker account is the catch-all, and everything else is pretty much self-defined?
No, Circuit Breaker is basically, it's funding that's provided by the state. It's a reimbursement for extraordinary sped expenses. So there are certain things that qualify, and you report your extraordinary expenses, and every year, the state comes up with a percentage of reimbursement. So when you report the expenses, they, what they do is they take your foundation budget per student, which is usually around $10,000, $11,000, four times that, so it's usually in the low 40s. And the expense above that, they will reimburse you at whatever rate they set, which I think last year was 74 percent, 74, 75 percent. So that money comes back to the district, and that's the amount that gets applied to the following year that you can use as available funding to offset the costs for the extraordinary expenses you have for sped needs.
So typically, a lot of times typically, what Circuit Breaker does is when we have students that are in out-of-district placements, those are the ones that are usually gonna qualify for a large Circuit Breaker reimbursement. And then a lot of times, what we're gonna do is you have two years to spend that Circuit Breaker reimbursement money, and a lot of times, what we do is we roll it back into just paying for the same out-of-district expenditures like the next year. So that's usually just built in our budget as a funding source to help handle that, and that's really what it's intended for.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So social, emotional, and physical wellness updates. So we're at the strategic plan, the social, emotional, and physical wellness goals. So some of the first ones were to increase social and emotional support district-wide for all students, develop a process to educate and respond to student needs, increase opportunities for students to promote physical movement and foster a growth mindset, and actively promote resilience. Those are kind of our main goals. If you look following that goal sheet, there's a page in here from Rebus Associates. It has their, their program, social, emotional learning in schools and homes. Talks about this 12-hour training program for teachers, clinical staff. So what we're doing is, we started participating in that. We had 20 staff members, it was our administrative team, and then representatives from each school, who participated in two days of this training. There are two more days of the training that'll probably happen in the winter. We've gotta finalize those. And then those trainers actually prepared and ran professional development today in the half-day, which we'll have the principal share with you in a minute. The next flyer in here is Lunenburg Public School. It's a program they're having at the middle high school in Lunenburg. The superintendent has invited us to go there, so we are sending, I think it's about 10 people tomorrow, who are gonna be going to the, the presentation there on trauma. The next page in there is from UMass Lowell. UMass Lowell has a symposium every year. This year, it's focused on social, emotional learning. The, my dissertation chair actually reached out to me and asked if we would like to participate in this. So we're gonna send a team of administrators up there to actually kind of pose questions to the, to their panel on SEL at their, at their symposium. So we'll be heading up there, participating in that on October 10th. And then the next one that says draft on it, that's our Clinton Public Schools. This is kind of the, these are the films that we're planning on screening on our November 8th PD day, kind of following along with that, that trauma focus and that part. But I did wanna at least invite the principals up at this time to maybe share a little bit about what they did today, how their PD went today, and, and some of the other things that they're doing in their schools to help support social, emotional learning. I told them, no PowerPoints, keep it simple.
How we doing? So I'll start. Do you mind if I jump in and you?
Go right ahead.
I was gonna jump in.
Go right ahead.
Well, Dr. Meyer already talked about the PD that we did, and there was administration there, we did six hours, and then the trainers did 12 hours. Before that, we had a department chair meeting here at Clinton High School, and we talked about SEL with the department chairs to bring back to their department meetings. And some of the things we are gonna do at Clinton High School, one of them is, every day, we stand out in front of our classrooms, and before the students come in, and as they walk by, I think when our rooms, we watch our room, we watch the hallways. But it's gonna be, just say hello. It's our, it's our new thing, just, every kid, just say hello. And also to form rapport or relationships with students, just so they all have someone to talk to. At our presentation today, we had introductions, we had a PowerPoint that went along, all three presenters did a piece of the PowerPoint, and then we did some puzzle work, and we finished with presentations by each group. We were set up into five different groups, and each group had to do a presentation. And what they did was they had to talk about what social, emotional awareness looks like versus what it doesn't look like, and then three strategies we could implement in our classrooms. So they all took away something, which was great, and we all viewed those, they were presented to the staff. We have a vaping program coming in this Thursday by Alicia Casey, and she's from Boston Children's Hospital. You're all invited, if you'd like to come.
What day is that?
What day is that?
Time.
Thursday, it's from 9:15, and I'm sorry, 9:45 to 10:15. Probably wanna get here a little bit before that, just to get a... And lastly, we have Blair Young coming in on October 1st to our faculty meeting. He's from the American Heart Association. He's gonna talk about hands-only CPR anti-vaping campaign and the Heart Healthy Challenge. So that's what everyone at Clinton High School.
So the middle school also had PD today, and our trainers did, first we had an introduction, and so we, we opened up with what is SEL, and what does it look like? And we made some really good connections to a program we had years ago, which was Responsive Classroom, and the idea of CPR, not really CPR, but Circle of Power and Respect. And then we did three breakout sessions, and the reason we did the breakout sessions is this coming Friday is our first official advisory period at the Clinton Middle School. So we did, one of the breakout sessions was on greetings, and the same as Mr. Sirmak just said, teachers just being at the doors, doing different ways of greeting their students, asking them questions. How was your weekend? What do you plan to do this weekend? How are you feeling today? You know, is this a good day? You know, just kind of getting them engaged and building those relationships, so that they start to feel comfortable and know that there's somebody there that cares about them. The next breakout session was how to run a morning meeting, so that that would be part of the advisory period. So we'll run morning meetings, and our, this is the textbook that we used at the training, and it talks about a classroom meeting. We're gonna call it a morning meeting, because that's when it's gonna take place at the middle school. And so we talked about the four parts of running a morning meeting, you know, starting off with an activity, kind of team-building, which we'll do this Friday. And I can't tell you what it is, because if the kids are listening, they're gonna figure it out ahead of time and already be ahead of the game. And then they'll have like a little discussion. So we'll have a topic, and then the kids can discuss it. What does that mean? What does it look like? What kind of strategies can we use to help the school be better at doing what the quote was, or whatever it is? And then there'll be an exit ticket each time, so that we can learn from the exit tickets, from the information that we receive from the students. My trainers will take that, they'll dissect it, and we'll build on it, so that the next advisory period, we can implement some of that, get better at what we're doing, and allow the students to feel that they're part of the planning as well as we develop the advisory. We also are going to start our staff meetings as a faculty meeting, which would resemble the SEL. So we'll have an activity, which Ms. Stevenson and Ms. Neely are going to do kind of like a mindful minute. It will be a little longer than a minute, but it'll be the staff being able to breathe, kind of like cool down, you know, take some time for themselves, and it'll be a different activity each time we go. It might be a little bit of yoga, it might be a little bit of breathing, it might be an activity in the gym, and then it will bring us back into our circle meeting, which will change from sitting at desks or tables in the library. We are calling this a Day Seven. Each faculty member, starting Friday, will be assigned 13 to 15 students that will be their advisory group for the school year, and this happens every 35 days. So approximately six more, hopefully. We're gonna kind of squeeze in two just before we break for the summer, so that students know that the school is still open during, you know, the summer, if they ever need to come back, and teachers can be reached via email. So that's our goal for our advisory. We also run a PBIS, I know I'm talking a lot, but we run a PBIS group at the middle school, and so far this year, we've done like bus practicing. So every student came outside, we practiced what the expectations are when we're riding a bus. At some point in the school year, every student will take a bus, whether it's a field trip, going home, coming to school, and what do the bus drivers need us to do to make sure that everybody's safe and comfortable? We did, we practiced cafeteria behavior, we practiced hallway behavior, and then we went into the classrooms. But when we got into the classrooms, students have a part in what the expectation should be looking like in the classroom, so that all students can learn. So it was, they built the rules and expectations, and then they're posted in the classrooms. If you walk through the building, you can see them posted in the classrooms. So it's been a great, great start to the school year, and I'm very excited with the trainers that we have chosen. So I thank them and Dr. Meyer for bringing the SEL to the district.
Okay.
So at the Clinton Elementary School, I think this, some of this began when we all went down to the administrative program down at the Cape this summertime. So the three of us got to go down?
When we, at that time period, we, many of us went to the SEL program that they had down there. So that, I think that spurred the idea for us, as far as a district, what can we do as far as SEL? And Dr. Meyer had already had that whole idea about social, emotional learning. So social, emotional learning, as you all know, comes in a variety of categories, from self-awareness to decision-making. And within that, especially relationship building and social awareness, the kids at the elementary school, that's that introductory level for them. It's an opportunity for them just to begin learning concepts that we have from the age of three all the way to 10, in the age of 10, when we have them. What are we doing in those areas? Obviously, Dr. Meyer went over what the teachers are doing. But today's professional development was extraordinary, because it was developed by teachers for teachers. And I think that by itself was hugely important. The people that were sent to the training created the professional development for their peers today, and they are the experts in what, what goes on to build a climate. So they're believable, and they're there at all times. So if there's any questions, those people can go back to them. Today, we went through, we split our team or our school into four different categories, four different groups. Each of them went to a small 20-minute session, and then we finished the day with a large group. During the 20-minute session, one teacher went over how they can use the morning meeting as a way of beginning this idea of SEL. So you're not taking up any more time within your classes, it's embedded within the climate of your school. From there, another teacher spoke about how they can use what's called a mood meter. All of us can use a mood meter at times, I'm sure, right? But for the kids, it's an opportunity for them to communicate how they're feeling inside a classroom. And the teachers created that, made it, and gave them, again, an idea of what's going on during their daily climate of their class. From there, Beth McNally went over mindfulness. She talked about different techniques that can be used, from meditation to other aspects to this, just to be able to teach those kids about self-understanding. And I think, as we saw from the young girl who spoke earlier today, those are the types of things that are working. And finally, we had Susan Towne, and she spoke about how people are put in different blocks. In our groups, in our school systems, we have a variety of different students coming from a variety of different places, along with our faculty members, and how sometimes we don't understand where we're the same and where we are different. So she did an entire exercise on what things are the same for you and what things are different for you, and allowed them to see where it's going on. Other programs that they were doing for the students, Grade 4 participating in what's called the Boston Versus Bullies Program. That is a, that's coordinated through our CES PBIS program. Sport personalities discuss their stories and how they fight about bullying. Some of the sports personalities through video are Mookie Betts, Ali Raisman, Torrey Krug. Those are the sports people that are there, and the kids can really understand them and see what they might have done. Grade K through 3 continues with our Second Step program inside the classrooms, but this year, we're gonna support it in our art, music, phys ed, and technology programs, too. It's not just a standalone program. That's one of the things Dr. Meyer was saying, that's one of the areas that we're doing with SEL. It's not a program. It's supposed to be how your climate is changing, the environment of your school. With that, obviously, we all know, is that we have a therapy dog. We've had a therapy dog for a long period of time, so I think we're on the cutting edge of beginning to understand that. And the Second Chance Breakfast, which begins through our dietary program, there's nothing that should be said about that. Having to come in with nutritional breakfast is very important. It starts the day for many of our kids. What are we also doing for our parents in our community? We work collaboratively with a lot of different businesses. Shout-out to, you know, Chaconis, the Shoba Valley Movement, and Achie Performance. They are all involved in our school, and they all bring the kids in, and, and that is that social health and awareness, that they all do things. They either come into the school, or we go to them. They've all been large participants. Megan and Alyssa do some things on Parent University, which talks about the academics and gets the people involved. And we have an international night, which is every other year, which is going to be our multicultural, which allows all of our participants of our community to be along. So I think CES is well on their way, as far as emerging the idea of SEL inside the climate of the school. I'm happy with the way the teachers, and I'm sure that the other principals will say the same thing about theirs. We have a wonderful staff who works extraordinarily hard, and kids are their first and foremost belief in what we have. So we're very lucky.
Any questions for the principals?
I just think, Mrs. Sargent, if there's any middle school students who are watching the school committee meeting, they deserve that.
Right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Agreed.
All right, so I just got a couple other things, mostly updates. The accountability data update, so accountability data is technically embargoed until midnight. I think at our last meeting, I, I informed you that we had filed an appeal, basically based off the methodology. I'd say we've kind of filed an appeal based on two points. One of them, they conceded on and said, yep, we, that makes sense. And the other one, they said, no, we're not doing that. So, which, at least they listened, we adopted to have conversations with them and walk through it. And essentially, the second point was trying to look at establishing sort of like a, a new comparative baseline, because we had, went from having third graders to third and fourth graders. And essentially, they were just not going to do that. They said that it's, those kids were already counted in another, in the middle schools' data last year, they're not gonna rerun that to establish a new baseline, and that just was not part of their protocol. The, the other part was just kind of looking at some of our criteria and reference.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Agreed.
All right, so I just got a couple other things, mostly updates. The accountability data update, so accountability data is technically embargoed until midnight. Well, I think at our last meeting, I informed you that we had filed an appeal, basically based off the methodology. I'd say we've kind of filed an appeal based on two points. One of them, they conceded on and said, yep, we, that makes sense. And the other one, they said, no, we're not doing that. So, which, at least they listened, we had the opportunity to have conversations with them and walk through it. And essentially, the second point was trying to look at establishing sort of like a new comparative baseline because we had, went from having third graders to third and fourth graders. And essentially, they were just not going to do that. They said that it's, those kids were already counted in the middle schools data last year, they're not going to rerun that to establish a new baseline, and that just was not part of their protocol. The other part was just kind of looking at some of our criteria and reference numbers as far as how they weighted last year's and this year's. And basically said, you know, if you, you can't do, what you're doing, you can't do it both ways, right? You either need to, you're judging us on like, you're saying this last year didn't count here, but then down here you're saying, well, it still does count, and you're not renewing a baseline. So they said, fine, we'll count it. So it just helped that number a little bit, but it wasn't, I mean, that's not, that's not hugely significant. What we will see, though, is that the accountability determination for Clinton Elementary School dropped a lot for next year, or for this year, from previous years. And a big portion of that is, I think, Clinton Elementary School, in a way, the best way to think of it is always had sort of an incomplete data set. Because one of the factors that they look at is growth. And you're not, in a grade, in a school that only tests one grade, you don't get a growth component because there's no growth to like compare it to. So when they only had third graders, they didn't have a cohort or the second test to really look at growth. Now that there were fourth graders, now they have the growth set, so now there's a complete set of data, so now it opened it into a totally different type of category. So there, I know that when the data comes out tomorrow, or I guess press already got it today, I think, they say, they claim they're releasing it to the press today, but it's embargoed till tomorrow. Yeah. I figured, you're not printing anything by tomorrow, that won't be up by tomorrow, so we're okay here. But I know that, you know, we'll have, you know, I think we are going to end up having two, two subgroups at the elementary school that are identified as needing focused support, meaning they were among some of the lowest when it looked at achievement and growth and all those scores. That's not to say I think that things are bad when you, we've, you know, since we kind of knew this was coming, we started looking at a lot of the data and trying to look and see where exactly did this occur, what's, what, you know? And when you look at it and you break it down on a grade by grade and test by test, like, we made some great gains in math. I mean, from grades three to six, pretty much every single grade improved significantly. And in ELA, it was a little more spotty. We had a couple grades that did well and a couple grades that took steps backwards, and that's really what kind of, what kind of focused, what kind of, you know, I think led us to that. But I think, I do think there's enough positive stuff there that shows, we can trace it back. I mean, we even ran, at the elementary school, I know we sat and we really, we ran it by teacher. You know, we literally ran by this classroom last year, what did they score, by this classroom last year, what did they score? And I think what we saw is enough positive signs that we feel like the changes that we're implementing are the right direction and they're going to work. What we need to do is to stay on that path and make sure that we're implementing them with fidelity and that all our teachers are expanding their capacity to do them the way we want to do. But we'll continue to break that down more. This, obviously, I wanted to fill you in because it's something that's going to come out in the paper tomorrow, and I get questions about it. The, you know, a big part of it is, it's not like the elementary school went from, oh, you went from a level one school to now you have subgroups. I mean, the reason that, first of all, it's a completely different accountability system now than that other system, it's also because it's a different data set. So, and that's where we are in that. Like I said, we'll continue to break it down. We will break it down for curriculum, to look at where our gaps in our curriculum are. We will break it down by subgroups, we'll break it down pretty much every way you can now that we kind of have the data and we can look at it. And we'll do more updates on that. I know typically what I like to do is that fall tri-council meeting, we like to try to just give kind of a state of where we are with all that. Okay? Any questions on that?
Well, I just, I think it's important for everyone to keep it in context. It's, you know, it's one data point, it's one assessment, it's an assessment in a window that...
It's, it's one data point that it, you know, it may or may not be reflective of the work that teachers and schools are seeing on a day-to-day basis toward growth and building the students' capacity. I also think where, and I don't know whether this is the case or not, but it's second, third go-around where it's been, it was, so this is the first time it's been completely digital across all grade levels. And so I guess a question that I would have is how much of the data do you feel is reflective of what students know and are able to do, and how much of it is, you know, time on the devices and being able to answer the questions in detail where I would assume much of the work that they do in the class is pencil and paper versus having to take this assessment where there are digital tools and it's all done on a device? So, you know, I don't know if you can tease that out.
I think, I mean, I think we'll do our best because I think what we'll want to look at is, you know, as we look at the, because literally we'll be able to look at like the released items, and we'll be able to look at these released items. If we didn't score, you know, if we scored below the state average on these released items, why? And we can start drilling down. And if that's one of those things where you're in a room and you're sitting there going, you know, with teachers and they're saying, we know we taught this, like, here's the sample work. And if we've got to say, well, oh, it's because they can write an essay but they couldn't type an essay, then it might get there. But, you know, that, that might be one cause, but it might not. It might be we look at it and we go, hey, you know what? We were kind of transitioning some things last year and maybe we didn't cover this as well as we should have, and we just need to do it better going forward. And I think, I think that's fine. I mean, I think, I think no matter what, I think all the decisions that we've been making, all the changes we've been trying to make, we've made them in the best interest of kids, we've made them with the idea of increasing rigor, getting kids to be more, you know, starting to become creators, and, and I think, you know, we need to stay that path. We need to do is use this as a checkpoint to kind of go back and look and where did, where were we not as successful as we want to be, and how do we go from there? You know, and I think we'll be fine. You know, I feel, like I said, you know, it's never good to, you know, it's like, so we have two subgroups that are basically going to be on, you know, a targeted support list or focused support list. And that's never a good, good thing to have, right? But I just, like I said, I don't think it should get lost in the fact that, you know, it was really, you know, we made some, there's some other areas where we made some really significant growth too. And it's just when you kind of did it all in the aggregate and did the one little, and they give you your one little number, like, that's, this is how it happens. So I think we just got, we need to keep teasing it out and we'll, we'll go from there.
Steve, you referenced the elementary school in all of your different examples. Is this study just the elementary schools or all grades?
It's all grades, but I would say there weren't really, there really weren't, I mean, there, we looked at the middle school, there were some changes, same thing in the middle school, there was some good, good movement in, in math in the, in the younger grades, little inconsistent with the ELA. But for the most part, I'd say the high school and the middle school were generally like the final number was relatively stagnant to what it's been in other years. I think one thing that we did do is, I think in some of our things, we actually academically, I think in the middle and high school, took a few steps forward. But then I think there are some things where, like chronic absenteeism and some other things that we had actually gotten credit for the previous year. This year, we, you know, it's like we had gotten a four, four out of four points for that for exceeding our target for chronic absenteeism. And then this year, we went down, so we got zero out of four points because it's a, it's a decrease, you know, so it's, and, you know.
For context, it's, it's 10 days or more over the course of the school year. It's not being present for taking the tests. And I'm not sure if the DESE has that completely figured out yet.
And we also, we've already looked at that too. I mean, we've looked at, we got the, the DESE advisory on attendance coding, and we've been sitting with, I sat with Christie, who does most of our state reports, and we've looked at, you know, there is a way that I can code students as get receiving educational services. If they're, if they're not physically present, then it counts as present, and we hadn't been doing that. So, for example, if a student is hospitalized and we're paying for tutoring, I can code them as present because they're getting educational services, where we hadn't been doing that previously, they had been marked as absent. So now we have that code added in so we can try to make sure that, you know, where our, our data set is based on the same information that, that other schools are doing, so. But I hate, you know, sometimes I hate when you're doing that stuff because you feel like you're, you're trying to play a game, right? And I'm not trying to play the game, but you got to...
But the flip side is if they're, if they're putting together data that's going to give you some sort of rubric that's going to assess how you do things well, then we might as well play by the rubric so we do things well.
Correct, yeah.
Because other than that, it's lost in the data, so.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you.
Thanks.
And I also reached out to the, I just happened to be talking to Bill Connolly and Mike Ward, and, and I offered to come to a selectmen's meeting and kind of explain to them a little bit about the accountability data as well, just so that another audience can kind of hear our perspective of it and go from there.
Cool.
So probably try to do that in October.
Okay.
There's a handout in here, a couple handouts on the Student Opportunity Act. This is a funding act, basically, to address the foundation budget, a lot of the stuff that was started last year. It's, this is really just an FYI. It's very similar to what they did last year where they increased basically the factors of the free and reduced lunch, students, the English learner population, the true cost of health insurance, different things that they looked at last year. And as we mentioned, last year, we received a significant bump in our Chapter 70 last year when they kind of revamped the Chapter 70. So previously, you know, maybe we were only getting the minimum $20 a kid or whatever, 25 bucks a kid that they were giving. Last year, we received a pretty significant increase in that, in that school funding based off this new formula. So this act is to try to make it more of a law, I guess, and to phase it in over seven years, which is what they had talked about. And we did some presentations on this last year that showed kind of the difference between the true cost and what they were funding it. It was never something that was going to be filled in a year, but phasing it in over seven years, if that means we're going to see some increases like we saw last year, it should mean great things for us in terms of having opportunities to continue to move forward. So this was supported by the Superintendent's Association in general, and, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of that stuff.
Steve, do we anticipate that the fact that they're also lumping in the, or adding the fact that the MSBA projects and for buildings, that that could be a positive development for us?
It could too, if they remove that cap, yeah. And then that means that, you know, if we're on the shortlist for the middle school projects and now they can do, you know, three more this year because they lift the cap, then maybe, maybe that we can find a, so yeah, I believe that that's another positive of this.
Anything else on that?
So like I said, it's more disinformational if you hear people talking about it. I think it would be a positive thing for us. And if you want to say, you know, how would it affect Clinton, like, well, it should, it should more accurately account for the cost of, the true cost of educating students and, and due to kind of our varied demographics, it would result in some significant financial increases, I believe, over this, over the seven years for Clinton. The last one I have here is a fuel efficiency vehicle policy. And I included this to you guys, it's a little, it's a little weird. It is a, not weird, I guess, it's just, it's the, it's for the green communities grant, and to get that, that green communities designation, and this is a specific, you know, criterion for that. So this is something that the town is doing, it's trying to become, you know, a green community. And what they ask you to do is for compliance for this, you know, the, the selectmen have to adopt a policy, but then they say that the school committee, the school superintendent needs to basically sign off and approve it. So I felt a little funny with that process, the way it was explained, because I thought, I don't, you know, policy is your job.
That's our purview.
Right. So I'm not just going to go signing off on a policy. You know, if you guys are comfortable with it and you wanted to vote to say you're okay with me signing off with it, or you're, you're okay with me signing off on it pending selectmen approval, something like that, then, then that would be fine. If you want to, you know, wait on it, I know I talked to the selectmen, they, they just briefly got this, and I think in their last meeting, they haven't had a full discussion on it. I know Mr. Ward said he wanted to kind of talk to, talk to us to see if we had any concerns from the school side before the selectmen, you know, just kind of adopted it, so.
Yeah, there's just, so I think, page three or four, fifth page in says for public school districts, what our responsibility is vis-à-vis the superintendent. Would someone like to make a motion to, I don't even know what the motion would be, to authorize the superintendent to act in the school committee's interest insofar as the select board has...
Or say upon selectmen approval.
Okay. So upon selectmen approval, the school committee would authorize the superintendent to...
Stating that we've, that we are willing to adopt the fuel-efficient vehicle policy. I mean, that's a letter they say, right?
It, it does.
But I mean, in theory, we're not necessarily adopting a policy right now. And that's unless we want, unless we want to call it a policy and give it a letter. So that's why it's a little, it's, that's why, that's why I'm bringing it to you.
So, so how would you prefer, would you prefer to wait for the selectmen to move in this direction, then we'll just take it up?
Yeah, I'd say, so the first thing I would say is, from a, from a, I guess the first question would be, from a content of the policy or the, or the principle of the policy, are there any objections or concerns from the committee?
Only budgetarily.
Right. But it would be...
On my part, I don't want to speak for the entire committee.
But I think the way it's read, it reads, though, it's just when we replace vehicles, right? And there are certain things that are exempt. So for, for example, right now, are, like, the vans we transport students in are exempt because you can't even buy them that meet those types of requirements right now and have the, all the 7D requirements.
How many vehicles does the school department have that would even fall under this, that would fall under our purview?
Well, that's what I'm saying. So we have, what, four total vehicles?
Which are...
And two of them are, that's counting two plow trucks that are basically now part of the facilities. So really, I guess that's a good question, if we're counting if the, if our maintenance trucks, if our two maintenance trucks are actually more falling under the facilities purview right now, really, it's just our, our vans that we own.
And if you can't buy them for that standard, then...
Right, so right now, they're considered exempt things, which we still would say, even if we only have exempt vehicles, we have to still adopt it. But, yeah, so I don't, I mean, this isn't something where, you know, we don't have a bunch of company cars out there or anything that's going to, you know...
No, Zermack is going to be driving a hybrid by next week. I just want to make sure. That's all said.
I think from, I think we just need to make a motion to allow Dr. Meyer to provide a letter from him to the town saying that we're adopting the fuel-efficient vehicle policy, right?
Yep. And work on, maybe at a later date, of just trying to clarify it and put it more of a policy form that we, like, are, in that way, it's actually in our policy book.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion being made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to authorize the school superintendent to submit a letter to the select board? There being none, all those in favor? unanimous, thank you.
Yeah, I think that'll work out well, so I'll be able to, to follow up with our support of this, of the green communities. And then if the selectmen, when they, when they adopt it, if they do make any changes, we'll get those reflected in our final copy of the policy that we can, we'll bring backing into this board to, with like a letter to on it and get it approved.
Okay.
All right, I believe that's all I had.
Thank you. Do we have anything under our advisory committees? I don't believe any of them have met.
No, I don't believe any have met since last meeting.
Okay.
The marketing committee has a meeting Thursday, October 3rd at 6:00 PM at the superintendent's office.
10:03, thank you. Policy Subcommittee, we've agreed, will meet regularly, at least before one of our school committee meetings at 6:00 PM, so we'll be able to have that on an ongoing basis. Anything else?
I'd say I'll, I'll be reaching out to the members of the curriculum committee soon just to try to get that, especially now that we have MCAS data, we're going to want to start breaking that down and doing some of that through that committee. So we'll try to get one of those on, on the books pretty soon. I do that through email, but that curriculum committee is usually pretty big because all of the, like, department chairs and instructional leaders are also members of that committee.
Anything under old business? Anything under new business?